All right, we're gonna go ahead and resume our meeting. We had, we ha- began our meeting at four thirty today with an executive session. So, we are ready to approve our minutes. Uh, the recommended action is to approve the minutes for our regular board meeting held on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and our special board meeting held on December first, two thousand twenty-one.
I move for the approval of the minutes, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And, no, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I, I mean, move down to the bottom instead of the top. November eighteenth of twenty twenty-one and December first of twenty twenty-one. Second.
All right, a first by Toadvine and a second by Lewis. We'll go right into roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
All right, next we have the approval of our financial report dated November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And our recommended action is to approve that financial report.
I move for the approval of the financial report dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. All right, first by Lewis, second by Angel. Mr. Epsy?
Um, there's really nothing of, of, um, great substance to report on. I did wanna bring up, though, the investment report that's at the very end of the financial report. As we look at this, we, we use a brokerage for our investments, and so each one of the trades that happen have to be approved by me. Um, and, and so fifth third will reach out and ask for a specific, um, approval for that. One thing that we're gonna be doing in the next couple of months is starting to evaluate our cash flow models to then create a strategy for our investments. Um, you, you heard last month me talk about the five-year forecast, and some of the challenges that we have facing us in the, in the coming years. What we're gonna be doing is looking at specifically what makes the most sense for our investments, uh, going forward, and I just wanted to bring that up as, as you look at that report, um, at the, at the very end of the financial packet. Do you all have any questions?
Right, roll call.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Right, next we have our recognition of citizens, staff, and students. Um, first we have our November District Student of the Month, Lucy Hussain from Mound Elementary School. Is she here tonight? Oh, okay. She's here, okay, great.
Come on up, Miss Lucy.
Hi Lucy.
I love your dress. How cute.
So, the Myhamsburg City School District November Student of the Month was Lucy Hussain. She was nominated by her teacher, uh, Ms. Kim Bardell. Uh, Ms. Bardell said, uh, Lucy is a student who takes all of our mound gopher expectations to heart and exemplifies them daily. She is respectful, responsible, and ready to learn each and every school day. Lucy knows how to laugh and have fun while at mound, but she also knows when it's time to be serious. She is respectful to her classmates as well as to the adults in our building. Lucy can always be found helping to clean our classroom at the end of the day before dismissal. She is not asked to do this, but she takes on the responsibility in order to have pride in her surroundings. Most of all, Lucy is a wonderful example of our PBIS expectation, which is ready to learn daily. Lucy sets challenging goals for herself for extra math, a fact fluency activity. When she meets those goals, she sets her sights even higher. Not everything comes easy for Lucy, but she keeps a positive attitude and possesses a strong desire to succeed. She works hard and perseveres. She faces challenges head-on and does what she needs to do to overcome the obstacles. She often prefers to work independently rather than with a partner so she can figure things out on her own and not have a classmate just give her the answer. She will ask for help when she is truly stuck on something. She will put extra time in to ensure she understands. She will also do whatever it takes to meet her goals. I am proud of Lucy for everything that she has accomplished so far this year, and I know she will continue to reach for the stars. Ms. Lucy, congratulations on being the Student of the Month for November.
All right, next we have, uh, Myamis- oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Amsler needs to read the other Students of the Month.
Other Building Students of the Month include Ballard Elementary School, Owen Engel, Bear Elementary School, Ava Smith, Jane Chance Elementary School, Ellie Bozell, Kinder Elementary School, Kamara Cooper, Mark Twain Elementary School, um, Bren Vitale, um, Medlerview Elementary, Alastair, um, and Arin Foltz. Uh, Myhamsburg Middle School, Brooklyn Miller, and at the Myhamsburg High School, uh, we have Talisa Bray Harris. So, congratulations to all of our Students of the Month and especially to Ms. Lucy from, uh, Mound Elementary School.
All right, thank you. Now, we're ready for the Myhamsburg Middle School Presents Current Events.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here to share some exciting things that are happening at the middle school this year. This year, uh, one of our building goals is focusing on fostering, creating, building a sense of belonging. After the last two years, we really are, uh, tried to focus this year using our panorama data in the spring and in the fall on fostering a sense of belonging for our students and our staff. So, one of the things that we're doing for students, um, is that Wednesdays, we have a group of students at each entrance, um, welcoming students, they, they have signs, they're smiling, they have a lot of energy and enthusiasm, just a welcoming face as students are coming in the building on Wednesdays. Wednesdays are also be kind days, so especially on Wednesdays at the middle school, we're kind, we're encouraging students and staff to wear their kindness apparel. With staff, we're also using, or excuse me, with students, we're using our Start With Hello program. Our guidance counselors have shared with teachers about every other week the Start With Hello curriculum and asking teachers to use that throughout the day. The Start With Hello curriculum focuses on building a community, having kids get out of their peer circles, identifying students who might be experiencing isolation or loneliness, and especially at the, uh, middle school age group, how do I get out of my peer circle to say hello and bring more kids into my group? So, we are using that Start With Hello program this year with all classes at the middle school. With my staff, a way that we are starting to, or helping to build a sense of belonging is our BLT group meets once a month, and we are really trying to make as many site-based decisions, um, in the building as we can. So, for example, in August, we sat down, given our COVID guidelines that we had to use, and, and outlined what does a day look like at the middle school, given all the procedures that we had to follow. In January, we'll look at what does the master schedule look like next year, uh, what does teaming look like? And so, anybody's welcome to attend the BLT meetings. I share the agenda two or three weeks prior to the meeting, and so if people feel like that's something they wanna have a voice in, they attend the meeting, we have the discussions, we make decisions, and we're trying to, uh, build that sense of belonging by giving people a voice and ownership in things that we're doing. Another thing that we've started this year is I have invited Dr. Blessing to have lunch with every team in the building of teachers. So, about every other week, she's eating lunch, thirty-five minutes of uninterrupted time with staff, getting to know each other. They can ask school questions, they can just ask, you know, what, getting to know one another. And so, um, so far, we've had all of our sixth grade teams, um, eat and meet with Dr. Blessing, and they are really enjoying that thirty-five minutes of uninterrupted time, and, you know, I think she shared that she's also enjoying that time to get to know, um, staff and us in a small setting. Um, another thing that we were super excited to add to our staff this year, in the spring of last year, we met with a small group of teachers and Dr. Blessing to work on a therapy dog policy. And so, we were super excited when it got passed, and that we were able to invite Jen Harold and Charlie to the building this year. I'm gonna ask her to come up and talk about the training. There's some pretty intensive training that she and Charlie have to go through in order to become a therapy dog, and then, um, how we're using Charlie in the building. Charlie and I are certified through Therapy Dogs International. Once you have your canine good citizen, then we had to go to a, didn't have to do that. Uh, then you have to go to, uh, a step further for their, um, citizenship, and then we started the therapy dog training. Um, it was six or eight weeks, I can't remember. Once a week, I did it through Middletown Dog Training Club. They were a very, very good organization. Um, and then we had to be certified by a Therapy Dogs International, um, evaluator. And so, he had to go through a series of commands that they knew, that he knew. Um, yeah, he wanted to see everybody. He thinks everybody loves to see him. Um, and then the main thing was he also had to be around different medical equipment. So, he had to be, um, go around wheelchairs, walkers, crutches, um, loud noises. They would drop pans to make sure that he wouldn't, um, react when there was a loud noise, um, screaming people. They had screaming people. He had to ignore them, um, ignore food on the ground. Um, and he passed. The hardest part was when I had to leave the room. I have to leave the room and him not whine. That was the hardest part for him to pass. But, yep, so he went through it, he passed, and he loves, loves, loves kids. The younger they are, the more he loves them. But he, he loves all of our kids. Some of them back here have him. Um, but he has to stay with me. That is one of the things that we would like to get worked out, is that, you know, I would like for him to be able to be a resource whenever other people in the building might need him. But I always, for insurance-wise, I always have to be with him. So, it's kinda hard to pull me out of my room. And there might be a crisis, but he's there, definitely there on every test day, and the kids love that. And I think Kelly has, did you put the picture?
Yep, I got several pictures of, um, staff, our students and staff members utilizing Charlie.
So, he just, he just runs around my room, and the kids know. They just put their hand down and he'll come to them. He, um, I had to train, train the kids too, not to call his name, 'cause when twenty-five kids were yelling out his name, he would get a little confused. So, they don't call his name, they put their hand down, and he just runs around. Sometimes I can't find him, 'cause you can see he's like under a table. And the kids are petting him underneath the table. So, currently, uh, Charlie works with Jennifer on Team Two, but again, I think we'd like to, uh, in the future, find ways to really use, um, them as a resource if we have a kid in crisis, or we have a student that has some, some sensory needs or might ut- uh, might utilize him in that aspect. Right now, he's with Jennifer or in her classroom or wherever she goes, and he's been a great student in the building. So, we're excited to add him this year. Um, currently, we're also excited to be a part of the Myhamsburg Adopt a Family Program. La- uh, this year, we were able to, between our student government led by Robin Blathers and Michelle Dakin, and staff, adopt twenty families through this program. And so, adopting the twenty families means that we can also support forty to fifty, uh, children in the city, because some of the kids are babies all the way up to high school. So, last week, we had staff and students shopping, wrapping, and bringing items to the building, and today was actually, um, package drop-off day. So, we have students out, high school students, out delivering, um, the packages today.
Before you move on, um, I'd just like to say, Jennifer, I know that you put a lot, a lot of time and effort into making the comfort dog happen. Uh, I guess we've probably discussed it now for about three years, maybe? And so, and I think that, that's, uh, it's, it's really neat that, that we finally to that point where you can have it in the classroom. I certainly hope that Charlie can get out and do some other things, um, you know, with, without you being there and so forth, too. You know, I, I, that training that he went through, I think I could probably do it, except I don't know where I could leave the food on the floor. Sharon knows me, she said, no, you couldn't.
Last week at the middle school, we had our choir concert. In between our sixth and eighth grade choirs, we had sixth, seventh, and eighth grade choirs, we have about a hundred and fifty students. The choirs are led by Amy Brady, Heidi Hartley, and Caitlin Coulson, um, and they did an excellent job. If we can get it to play, maybe not. I have a little clip from the choir concert. Maybe not. I would volunteer to sing, but I don't know, it would be nearly as good as what the choir kids did. No, yes, okay. So, I, then I wanna wrap up our evening with our band students. We, I've invited, uh, some eighth grade band students here this evening, and Ryan Wintersheimer, the band director. The winter band concert will be January thirteenth at six-thirty, so the band students are working hard now to prepare for that. Um, but I wanted to, uh, give us an opportunity for some holiday music before we float it off for winter break. I want to introduce Sarah Beeky, Sarah Nifely, Michaela Fulham, Brent Mull, Maria Stevens, and Lauren Homan, accompanied by, or led by, Mr. Wintersheimer.
Two quick tunes for you to enjoy. We're gonna start with Up on the House Top. Mr., uh, Espy over there is not allowed to critique my sleigh bells technique. Are you ready? Here we go, ready? And, one, two, here we go. Then we have one more little, uh, song for you. It's a little medley of Jingle Bells and Jolly Old Savior. One, two, ready, go. Thank you for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Ladies, I love the.
Thank you. All right, uh, next on our agenda, we have our Resolution of Appreciation for Sharon Angel. All right, I'll read your questions. All right. Whereas the Myhamsburg Board of Education recognizes the importance of excellence in board leadership, and whereas Sharon Angel has rendered sixteen years of service to the Myhamsburg City School District, commencing with her November two thousand and five election to the Myhamsburg Board of Education, and reelections in November two thousand nine, two thousand thirteen, two thousand seventeen, and whereas, while an elected official, Sharon Angel dedicated herself to representing the entire educational community, and whereas during her term of office, Sharon Angel served as Vice President in two thousand seven, two thousand eleven, two thousand sixteen, and as Board President in two thousand eight, two thousand twelve, two thousand seventeen, and whereas Sharon Angel also served on school levy and bond issue committees, search committees to employ superintendents and treasurers as legislative liaison, and now therefore be it resolved that the Myhamsburg Board of Education and Administration expressed their sincere appreciation to Sharon Angel for her dedication.
No speech. You're all going to make me cry, and I swore I wasn't going to do that tonight. But it has been my honor to serve the district. We have a fantastic team in central office, in the buildings. We have great leadership with our building principals. We have great leadership in central office. We have a wonderful staff, both teachers and our classified staff. I mean, we have bus drivers that go through everything to get the kids safely to school. We have, um, custodians who clean up everything. You wouldn't believe what they have to clean up in a building, but they do it every day with a smile, and all I can say is I'm appreciative of being part of that team, so, thank you. I'm done.
Give a few more, you gotta go.
I'll open this later. I'm not gonna open this now.
Did you wanna get your, did someone wanna get their picture of her now or later?
We, we got some pictures out, outside.
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations, Sharon. What a commitment. All right.
Hey, my goal was never to be the oldest school board member in Ohio, and I'm getting to that point, so I have to win.
Sharon, I'd just like to say, um, thank you, um, for, I've been fourteen of your sixteen years, and I, and I know you've, uh, spent many a night worrying about things, and when you're president, calling and talking to people and doing the things that, uh, needed to be done, and, and it's not an easy job. Uh, people, I think, sometimes don't understand what really goes on, uh, being a board member. And, uh, you've truly been the epitome of a board member, so thank you for, on behalf of even my grandkids and all the kids in the district. I think that's the, your heart's always been with the kids more than anything, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Let's just move on.
All right, all right, what? We'll listen to you, Sharon. All right. Approval of Adoption Revision of Board Policy. It is recommended that the Board of Education waive the first reading of the following board policy. Can I have a motion, please? File DID.
I move that we approve the waiver of the first reading of board policy, uh, inventory fixed assets.
Oh, second.
So, a first by Angel and a second by Amsler.
I could, I can take this one, so, um, the Auditor of State has released a recommendation for capitalization thrash- threshold of five thousand dollars. Our current policy states five hundred dollars. Um, so, we would e- essentially be increasing that to five thousand dollars. Also, we have some redundancy that's going on with the Technology Department, where they're having to maintain their inventory in their system, and then we're having to retrofit it to our system to keep inventory in two places. So, essentially, what this allows is the Technology Department to keep their own inventory of their items that they affect, um, and that would satisfy the recommendation and, um, the necessity that the Auditor's Office requires. Uh, and it also allows us to increase our capitalization threshold to five thousand and not have to tag, um, s- small items. We've been tagging items as low as fifty dollars, um, and it's just not a, a great use of our resources.
Any questions? All right, roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, next we go on to the Approval, Adoption, Revision of that Board Policy DID. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following board policy, inventories fixed assets, file DID. Motion, please?
I move for the approval, adoption, revision of board policy DID.
Second.
Was that Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, first by Amsler, second by Lewis.
I would also like to add one thing if I can. Um, this board policy now refers to a regulation which, um, can be, um, maintained by the Administration, um, namely, um, Mr. Homan, Dr. Blessing, and myself. So, instead of tying ourselves to an actual dollar amount in the actual policy, we are referring to a regulation that will be in place, um, should this pass.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry. Say the last part again.
So, there's a regulation, um, that can be in place so long as this board policy refers to it. So, there has to be a board policy referring to a regulation, and then we would put the regulation in place. So, it kinda happens concurrently. Should this pass, we already have the regulation ready to go, and it would be in place for five thousand dollars. Should this pass, we already have the regulation ready to go, and it would be in place for five thousand dollars.
Said Mr. Homan would be the administrator of the.
Essentially, all three of us would be, I mean, we would have to be in agreement on it. It wouldn't be just one person.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
All right, next we go to our consent agenda, and starting with approval of overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve overnight extended student trips, swimming and diving postseason tournament Canton, Ohio, January first through February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two for Stephanie Tidwell, Paul Greer, Kyle Doggett, and Taylor Blair. The girls' basketball postseason tournament Columbus, Ohio, February first through twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Allison James, John Brackman, Brooke Adams, Dan Norman, Riley Parkhurst. Gymnastics postseason tournament Columbus, Ohio, February one through February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. And I did miss Stephen Jane's name on the basketball tournament, but for the gymnastics, John Good and Mike Wiltzerman. The bowling postseason tournament Wayne's Web's Bowl Columbus, Ohio, February one through March twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, Doug Smith and Scott Sally. Wrestling postseason tournament Columbus, Ohio, February one through March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Nathan Carmack, Mike Dormitor, Jeff Turner, Adam Price, Justin Krul, Cameron Carnaval. Boys' basketball postseason tournament, oh wait, and Kurt Stapleton and Eli Perkins. The boys' basketball postseason tournament Dayton, Ohio, February thirteenth through March twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, Tim Fries, Rex Gardecki, Nolan Robinson, Chris Johnson, Connor Brown. Academic team postseason tournament Columbus, Ohio, April first through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, Sean Ridley. And then next for consent agenda item B, approval of out-of-state travel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state travel for Caitlin Coulson, marching in the Rose Parade Pasadena, California, December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one through January third, two thousand twenty-two. Wow. All right, and C, approval, recognition of school support booster organizations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve, recognize the following school support booster organizations. Bauer PTA, Bear PTO, Jane Chance PTA, Kinder PTO, Mark Twain PTA, Meadowview PTO, Mount PTA, Middle School PTA, Viking Soccer Parents Boys, Myhamsburg Band Boosters, Swimming Boosters, Myhamsburg Visual Ensemble Boosters, Guard, Vocal Music Boosters, Viking Booster Association, Myhamsburg Gridiron Club, MHS Cheerleaders Parents Club, Myhamsburg Wrestling Boosters Club Incorporated. And then item D, approval of class of two thousand twenty-two early graduates. Michael Black, principal of Myhamsburg High School, has recommended Joseph, Almoda G., Dylan Bailey, Samuel Forsyth, Erin Lane, and Kevin Robinett for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. Then E, approval of USDA revision of the Seamless Summer Program Adult Lunch Prices. It is recommended by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of Business and Human Resources to increase current adult meal prices from three dollars and sixty cents without milk and four dollars and twenty cents with milk to four dollars and fifteen cents without milk and four dollars and seventy-five with milk to meet the revisions of the USDA Seamless Summer Program. This is effective January third, two thousand twenty-two. And F, approval of revision of employee labor rate charged on the facility rental agreement. It is recommended by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of Business and Human Resources to approve a revision of the employee labor rate charged on the facility rental agreement. All right. And then G will be the approval of consent items A through F, but it is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent items A through F. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Okay, so first by Angel and a second by Amsler. And discussion?
Mr. Homan, can you talk a little bit about the change in the facilities rental charge?
Yeah, actually, I could touch base. This seems to be mainly my section, so. First of all, item C, the approval of the support and boosters. We do that every year. That, it's an extension. I kinda call it the extension of our classroom and students. We, as a board, recognize them, and they are also covered under our umbrella policy if anything would happen with the district. The E, the approval of the USDA revision, or USDA revision of the adult lunch prices, since we participate in the free meal program this current year and over the summer. In order for us to remain eligible for that, we have to raise our adult prices to meet that standard, so. Then on item F, the employee labor rate. So what we used to do is we would just have a flat amount, which we have not raised in a number of years. So if you remember, we've gone through several negotiations, and so really all we're doing is we're actually charging exactly whatever labor is charged for that event. So it's mainly our custodians and facility monitors, so whoever works that day, whatever they're getting paid for that day, we just, we pay to those groups that are renting it. And so remember that we don't, our groups like your PTAs, marching band, athletic events, those don't get charged back. These are for groups that are outside of the school organization. We're just trying to make sure we break even and we're not footing extra than what we need to foot, so.
Any other discussion about any of those items?
Mr. Homan, most of these rental agreements, they still go through Jason Shade, some of them.
Yeah, as we've divided duties out, he, he gets the initial paperwork, and then I take care of the contracts, and I work with John's office for the invoicing and all of that, so.
Go ahead.
I just wanna say, you can't get a lunch for five dollars anywhere, so they're still getting a bargain.
All right, roll call.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
All right. Next we move on to the human resource, human resources agenda items. We'll start first with the approval of personnel reports, certificated, classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myhamsburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a B C I I and F B I criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. A motion please?
I'll move for the approval of personnel reports, certificated, and classified.
Second.
Okay, first by Lewis, second by Amsler. Mr. Homan?
This, business as usual on this one, and business as usual on the next one.
Okay. Roll call please?
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
All right, then next we have the approval of personnel report, certificated, classified, supplemental stipend. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, certificated, classified, supplemental stipend. And I had already read that, so we can go on with a motion.
I move that Board, uh, excuse me, for the personnel report, certificated, classified, supplemental stipend.
Second. All right.
Cause we're doing them individually.
All right, so roll call please?
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no, you're fine.
All right. Approval of settlement agreement. It is recommended by the superintendent and the treasurer CFO that the Board of Education approve this settlement agreement between the Myhamsburg City School District Board of Education and Patty Rang. I'm sorry.
I move for the approval of the settlement agreement, second.
All right, so first by Amsler, second by Lewis. Mr. Homan, do you wanna talk about that?
Sure. As we were going through with the new salary charts, there was an error that was made a couple of years ago when she was moved to Myhamsburg Middle School as an administrative assistant there. And so as we were going through, some of the things didn't add up, and, well, no pun intended, didn't add up, but we're not there, and Patty brought that to our attention, and we're gonna fix it, make it right for her, so we appreciate for her letting us know that, so.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
All right, next we'll do agreements and contracts. Approval of agreements for abatement projects at Bauer, Mark Twain, and Mount. It is recommended by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of Business and Human Resources to approve the agreements for abatement projects at Bauer, Mark Twain, and Mount. And then B, approval authorizing the purchase of a school van through E P C. It is recommended by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of Business and Human Resources that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a school van from Bo Townsend Ford through the Educational Purchase Center. The total amount is forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Next we have the approval of agreement with P and R Communications, and the dollar amount is twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents. It is recommended by the superintendent, treasurer, CFO, and assistant superintendent of Business and Human Resources to approve the agreement with P and R Communications for radio repeaters. And then D, approval of roofing project, Myhamsburg High School back west side. It is recommended by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of Business and Human Resources to approve the roofing project at Myhamsburg High School back west side. And then E, approval of agreement for the projector and whiteboard replacement project with Dayton Cincinnati Technology Services LLC, D C T S. It is recommended by the superintendent and assistant superintendent of Business and Human Resources to approve the agreement for the projector and whiteboard replacement project with Dayton Cincinnati Technology Services LLC, D C T S, for Myhamsburg High School, Mark Twain Elementary School, and Mount Elementary Schools per the attached quotes. And then F, approval of resolution, O S B A Legal Assistance Fund. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas the Myhamsburg City Schools Board of Education wishes to support the efforts of other boards of education to obtain favorable judicial decisions, and whereas the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistant Fund has been established for this purpose, therefore the board hereby resolves to participate in the O S B A L A F for calendar year two thousand twenty-two, and authorizes the treasurer to pay the L A F two hundred and fifty dollars. Next we have the approval of the agreement and contract items A through F. Do I have a motion? It is recommended the Board of Education approve agreements and contracts, items A through F. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the agreements and contracts, items A through F.
Second.
All right, a first by Angel and a second by Lewis.
Okay, I think these are all mine. At least one of them, Stacy, you can tap the other one. So a lot of these will go hand in hand on item A for the agreements of the abatement projects. Later on down the list, you see the, the replacements of the whiteboards and the projectors at high school, Mark Twain, and Mount. So in order as we replace those, how they were installed originally, we're gonna have to kinda do some reconfiguration in the classrooms, and so there'll be some abatement that'll need to take place in terms of that. The other piece of that abatement project is the window project at Bauer that we approved. I think it was last week. So they were gonna be working with Leepay Enterprises to kinda coordinate all of the, the projects together as well this summer. The purchasing of the school van, remember, we've had these discussions, that Ford is no longer making those transit vans. And so we had an opportunity to be part of a lottery with the E P C. Bo Townsend was able to get thirty-five, and they put all the E P C names in, and they pulled us as number two as a winner. I know it's kinda like really winning the lottery, so we were able to get one and be able to move forward with that, so. The P and R communications, which will really make all of our principals very happy here, is that we're adding a third repeater in the district. So the original repeater's up on Benner Road. We're starting to have some issues with it. They no longer make parts for it. So the one on Benner Road is gonna have two new repeaters on it. We have two repeaters now. Will be at Benner Road, and then one will be at the high school, and they're all gonna be connected together. So if you've ever been around at the end of the day at the elementaries, it's very hard for them to even communicate in the offices because you have seven buildings trying to use two channels. So now there'll be six channels available all day for people to use with that, so. I know the principals are very happy to actually be able to communicate as well. And then they are updating the software. Remember, certain radios in each of the buildings, certain radios actually go directly to Montgomery County Dispatch in cases of emergency. So we are upgrading that software as well with all three of the repeaters. The roofing project at the high school, we're gonna continue this summer. Michael, we're really gonna try to get it done this summer, but it's, the reason we're putting it on right now is, is supplies are in demand, and basically tomorrow, as soon as Mr. Esve signs us, we're sitting the quote in, so we can get our hands on the next available supplies for that, so. We shall see how that'll go. That, that will be the last part of the high school that will have been replaced except for the four hundreds. And the four hundreds right now is in, is in pretty good shape, so. And then the projects, the projectors and the, and the whiteboards. Stacy's worked very, very hard, along with Andy Kleber and the whole technology department to get this project going through the ESTR funds, and also the abatement is coming through the ESTR funds as well for the replacement of that. It's, it's been a pretty big undertaking for over a year now, and I really wanna give kudos to Stacy. She's really kinda ahead of this in making sure it's on track, so. And I think those are all my goodies, so. It's gonna take a lot of coordination. Once we kinda get to the end of January, February, we're meeting with each of the principals, it'll have abatement happening in their buildings, and the projector projects. It's gonna be a, a, a pretty big orchestration to get it all working together. Plus, they're gonna be removing the windows at Bauer and abating those at the same time, so. It's gonna take some coordination, but we will know more once we get to the end of January, February to work with the building principals, so.
There was a very nice article in the Myhamsburg News this week about Bauer new windows going in. So it better get done.
It will. Supplies right now are, are far and few, far and few between, that's why you're seeing a lot of these projects right now, getting on there for the summer. So.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
All right, next we'll move into our financial agenda items. A, Authorization for Amendment to the Appropriations and Certificate of Estimated Resources. It is recommended by the Treasurer, CFO, that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. And then B, Approval of Resolution to Transfer Inventory Items. The Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following resolution to transfer items of inventory from the Myamisburg City School District to Dayton Christian Schools. Then we, C, Approval of Financial Items A through B. Do I have a motion, oh, please, recommended by the Superintendent. Whoops. Sorry. Motion, uh, is recommended by the Board of Education approve Financial Items A through B. Motion, please?
Move for the approval of Financial Agenda Items, A and B. Second.
All right, so first by Lewis and second by Amsler.
So first, I, I, I wanna rec- recognize the Treasurer's Office staff for working hard on all of the reports, including the appropriation resolution and the, um, estimated resources, um, report. Those are just typical reports that we do as we, as we react to, uh, budgets increasing or decreasing and also incoming funds, uh, increasing or decreasing. Uh, one item on the Certificate of Estimated Resources is that we are, were able to, um, recoup forty-three thousand dollars and change from S R one that has not been spent, so that's reflected in there. On the second item, the transfer of inventory items, so, this past year, this calendar year, there was, um, legislation put in place to allow direct funding, um, from the state to non-public schools, and Dayton Christian, uh, decided to take that, uh, take the state up on that offer and through an affidavit, uh, we're, are, are now able to get direct funding. So, prior to seven-one, twenty-twenty-one, we had been the purchasing agent for Dayton Christian, so the state would send us funds and we would be the purchasing agent and also have to, uh, reflect that in our inventory. So now that they are getting direct funding, um, they have asked us and we have consulted with our legal counsel, uh, as well as the state, to see if we're able to move the inventory to them, so then they become, uh, responsible for it as well as they, they assume the insurance, uh, rates. So essentially, it's moving it off of our, our books onto them and kind of washing our hands of that inventory. If we were to keep the, keep anything, if we were to sell it or dispose of it, we'd have to send the money back to the state anyway, um, and we're not actually able to hold on to those items, uh, and not allow them to use it, so it doesn't really make a ton of sense for us to keep it on our books, so.
Any discussion? Questions? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Uh, next we move on to acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's zero-one-eight account unless indicated otherwise. Dell PC Server valued at one thousand twenty-six dollars to the Myamisburg School District from Wable Energy Systems. Market Golden Potatoes valued at approximately three hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Myamisburg City School District from Mister and Misses Dolly Law. And six hundred dollars from the Monday Night Club to the Myamisburg City Schools Community Connections Program. A motion, please?
I move for the acceptance of donations. Second.
Right, first by Amsler and second by Lewis. Any discussion?
I just wanna say, I'm a member of Monday Night Club, and Sally Royer came to our club meeting, we were talking about community needs, and she had so much information and was so good at letting people know the needs of the district and what she does, and they were overwhelmed. Typically, we give a couple hundred dollars a year to a something, but they opened their pocketbooks and said, hey, we appreciate what she's doing and let's do this for her and the district, so I just wanted to pass that along to Sally Royer, what a treasure the district has in her.
Oh, she's fabulous.
There were a couple of people who work in another district and they said, can we steal her? No.
Yeah, she's fabulous, I mean, if I have an incident, I mean, I've told you multiple times, I call you usually first and then I call her second and, and she takes, she gets information, sh- she's got connections. She feeds me information sometimes, so, uh, she's fabulous, so.
And I don't know if people know, when she was hired, she built that program, but she didn't know what she was gonna do, the district didn't know what she was gonna do, but she built it, so she really is a godsend.
Yeah, so did we use, uh, potatoes for lunch? Is that what we, did we?
Yes, it was, it's, um, smokily grown potatoes and they had some extras from, and so they went ahead and donated them, so we still have to accept them. And they said they were very good, by the way, so, I did not get one though, so.
Great.
And then the, the Wable one, they have donated, um, a computer for, before we had some, um, upgrades to the systems and all that, so they've donated that to help, um, as being a partnership with us as well.
Well, if you need a, a tater tester, I'll volunteer.
They're all gone.
It's food.
Get it on the floor, Dale, that's the only thing I'm gonna ask, so, you know.
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Okay, next we move to reports, and we'll start out with, um, our MVCTC President, Joe Isaacovich.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy holidays. Uh, first item, I left a little teaser at your places, this was the menu.
You should have brought us some of that.
Yeah, that's all gone.
Wait a minute, this has already happened?
Yes.
Then why didn't you give it to us?
First by.
I was looking forward to that, I didn't look for date.
Uh, basically, this was our Christmas dinner before our board meeting, uh, uh, Tuesday night. Basically, uh, for those that don't have a copy, it was cranberry pecan salad, grilled almond maple salmon, or pan fa- fried chicken, and caramel apple cheesecake, and it was, uh, put together by our students in the Culinary Cafe. One reason why I brought it up is that one of our students, uh, Wiley Tony is a student here from Myamisburg and got to talk to him after the dinner, and, uh, he enjoys the program, is doing very well, and is, uh, an aspiring young chef, so, uh, I promised Wiley that I would bring his name up at this meeting, so, there you have it. Uh, the other thing, I wanna top and, uh, thank Dr. Blessing for your article in the, uh, Newspaper Sunday about our collaboration, uh, between Myamisburg and MVCTC on the robotics and engineering courses. Very well done, Dr. Weldy was ecstatic, so I wanted to pass that along to you because, uh, you know, we are increasing our, our, uh, penetration as far as satellite programs go, that is one, one way of growing, uh, our programs. Uh, we obviously have our main campus with around two thousand students and then the rest in satellite programs. If you drive south on seventy-five and you pass the Butler Tech Building on the right as you get to two-seventy-five, they are a satellite campus, uh, they really do not have a campus, a central campus, it's all satellite programs, so we're trying to, uh, do both, campus and satellites, but again, thank you for the great article. Uh, we had sophomore career days, uh, recently, we had almost thirty-three hundred sophomores attend this year and to visit our career technical programs on campus, it went very, very well, and, uh, hopefully we will, uh, increase our, our attendance. Also, as a point of note, uh, over the last forty years, our MVCTC FFA chapter, the Future Farmers of America, has raised over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the families at the Ronald McDonald House Charities of Dayton, and this year we held, uh, another auction and made over ten thousand dollars for the house. And it's interesting, uh, in the first year that they, uh, they asked for donations, we had two hundred and fifty dollars, so it's grown very well. Uh, also, December sixteenth is the end of the first semester, last day for students. Uh, effectively, three o'clock tomorrow, our masking goes from mandatory to, uh, a, uh, hard voluntary. Uh, and basically, we did it because the students are gone, but we have, uh, security, staff, people working the campus over the holidays, and then the students will, uh, come back to a voluntary situation at the beginning of January, but quite frankly, uh, all but two of our partner schools have gone voluntary, and it makes it kind of difficult to, uh, hold the line on something, uh, when your partner schools, uh, have gone back. Uh, and then our classes resume on January fourth. Uh, program highlights this month, Electrical Trades, Corey Harden from Myamisburg is, uh, doing his internship at Act of the Late Electric in Dayton. Also, MVCTC Senior, Emmeline Burke, uh, she's currently employed at TJ Chumps in Myamisburg as a host, but she is a senior in our robotics and automation program from Myamisburg, and she plans on attending the University of Dayton as a double engineering major, chemical and robotics, so, uh, we wish her the best, she's quite a good student. Uh, also, uh, on the IT end of it, uh, our Computer Repair and Technical Support Senior Class recently spent the afternoon at Interlink Advantage, it's a local IT company in Englewood with the, different areas of IT support. They currently employ student interns from the Computer Repair and Technical Support Program at CTC, and two former CTC graduates from the Computer Networking Program work there. Uh, currently, Bailey Seto, uh, from Myamisburg is part of the, the class at MVCTC, so, we're moving along, construction's going well, we have our materials, uh, coming in, uh, as required, so hopefully we won't see any delays, uh, and, uh, we'll be in business in two thousand and twenty-three as far as the new campus, so. That's all I've got, any questions or comments? If not, everyone have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and be safe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we move on to Legislative Liaison, Sharon Angel.
And I left my paper at home, so I won't have anything to report this month. I know they were still working on getting the budget together, do you have a firm number yet of when we will get our?
No, um, well, they, they say January.
And they've gone on vacation now, they are nowhere.
Right, they say January, so basically, we were told October, and then it was pushed back to December, and now it's pushed back to January. Um, if, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to say something about House Bill one-twenty-six. Is that okay?
Yeah, that was on my list, yes, please do.
Okay. So, for those of you that don't know, House Bill one-twenty-six would essentially remove, uh, Boards of Education from the Board of Revision process. Um, and so, it's, it's a little bit dangerous in the fact that property valuation, especially Class One and Class Two, um, really is what this pertains to for us, is Class Two, which is, uh, you know, commercial. To not have a seat at the table for Boards of Education would be, would be fairly dangerous. And just to illustrate how dangerous, since I got here, uh, on October one, twenty-twenty-one, we would be looking at potentially three hundred thousand dollars of lost revenue without having a seat at the table. Um, and that would be worst-case scenario, but that, that's a huge number, especially when you project it out year after year. So I would, I would highly suggest, um, that everyone in this room reach out to legislators to let them know, uh, how important this is for school districts. If you need any of those legislators' contact information, I would be happy to provide it to you.
Can you send that to all of us?
That's really a big.
Yes, I will.
Okay, thanks. Sorry. Um, next to, um, the student, you already did the student achievement, so.
I did.
We'll move on to Montgomery County District, press.
Nothing until January.
Can I have the district news? The latest Making a Difference Honoree is Mound Elementary School Second Grade Teacher Lori Bicknell. Lori was nominated by Glenda Mesta, who said, "I would like to nominate Ms. Lori Bicknell, Second Grade Teacher at Mound Elementary for the Making a Difference Award." Ms. Bicknell is responsible for one of the most diverse classrooms in our building. Her classroom is made of students with various strengths and challenges. During the continuing pandemic in our ever-changing environment, Ms. Bicknell has continued to offer the best educational opportunities possible for her students. She strives to meet each student at his or her current level and focuses on specific learning goals for every student. She embodies all the values of an amazing teacher. Whether it is volunteering to help with the after-school program or assisting teachers with substitute plans and materials, Ms. Bicknell is making a difference each and every day in the lives of our students and staff. It's pretty amazing that she volunteers for the after-school program after teaching all day. A lot. And then MHS Senior Guard Anna Long scored her one-thousandth career point against Wes Carrollton on, on November twenty-ninth. Only eight other Myamisburg Girl Basketball Players have achieved this honor throughout their high school careers. Next season, Anna will be continuing her basketball career at Division One Bing- Binghamton, Binghamton University. Yeah, I was there that night, that was very cool, she had a big smile on her face, ran up into the stands and hugged her parents, it was very cool. So, uh, that's it on that, and then we're just gonna go around the table now. We'll start with Mr. Toadvine.
I'd just like to say, thanks to, once again, to just all of our, um, employees and stuff for the district that, uh, have worked very, very hard, and I think they deserve a, a break, and I just hope that everybody, um, has a very good, relaxing break and, um, come back refreshed and ready to go. Good talk.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead, I know you just said to all employees, but I kinda handpicked some, so, I'm sorry. Um, all of our building principals and building secretaries, always on the front line there, I know it gets a little bit more chaotic right before the break, thank you very much for all you do, we appreciate it. Sharon? Sharon, thank you for a lifetime of service to Miami's Burke City Schools. You've made this a better place. Thank you. And happy holidays to everyone.
And I'll just say thank you for all the kind words tonight. I was going to introduce Corey Daffler, our new board member coming on board, but he could not be here tonight. But I will say, he's a Miami's Burke grad. He's married, uh, to a Miami's Burke grad. He has two children in the district, one at the middle school, one at Bear. And I know he'll be coming around to meet you. And I know he has the best interest of the district in heart. He will be a good addition to the board. He's a businessman. He's, uh, buying into a partnership in town, is what he told us.
Yes, sincerely.
And so he's busy with his work, but he also, I'm glad he made the commitment to be a board member and do something for the district. So that, that's it. Everybody have a happy holiday. I've said enough tonight.
Um, with the holiday season, I would say, um, first of all, I'd like to say, um, in my line of work, um, in light of, uh, last Friday's disaster down south that moved from Arkansas to Kentucky, uh, my hearts and, and prayers go to those families down in Kentucky. Uh, doesn't matter what the devastation was. It could be minor, it could be major, like, uh, Maesville, Kentucky. Uh, our fire station, just in the past three days, is a central hub for this particular area for a pickup on supplies. And, um, yesterday and today, we have, uh, filled a complete bay up with just supplies and things that are going down there. So, uh, I want to say, um, not only from the communities, but the, but the, but the kids, the parents, uh, uh, the devastation, we've got, uh, a couple of people down there right now, and they just said, it's something that they can't even put into words. So our, my thoughts and prayers go to the students and, and the kids and families in that particular area. Um, as I give thanks, I want to say, um, you know, we put a lot of time into work, um, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, uh, throughout the year. But the Wizard of Oz, uh, back in the back, um, Mr. Freeze, I want to tell you, um, your time and efforts don't go unnoticed. Uh, thank you for your time. I know this is your busy, busy season. And, uh, I am, and I just wanted to say thank you for all you do for us, um, and, uh, getting us on the air without any problem. So, um, Mr. Black, I was there at the high school last week, um, even though we are optional with masks. Uh, it is, uh, remarkable. Um, I like the fact that a lot of these kids, even at the high school level, are masking, uh, for whatever the reason. Uh, I asked a few of them why, um, you know, and they were all good reasons. So, um, it looks like they don't have a problem, those that are masking. So, uh, thank you. Um, and thank the kids that are, um, keeping kids in school is our first priority. Um, Mrs. Niece, you've been there for, um, a year. Um, I've been here eight years. Since I've been here, I will tell you, there hasn't been anybody that has done a, a better job of communication than you. Uh, you've done excellent as far as a phone call, an email, a text message, uh, follow-up, a reminder, whatever the case may be. Um, I know that I'm supposed to move over into that seat. Do I want it? No. But, um, I don't think I'm gonna have a choice, but, uh, but I wanted to tell you, everybody has a challenge sitting in that seat, and I thought you've held it, uh, together really well. Uh, and I commend you on all your efforts this year. So congratulations.
Thank you. And sorry for all the time I called you at lunch.
No, you're fine.
Spoiled your lunch break.
Um, finally, I just wanted to say, um, to my left, you, uh, you helped me more than you probably realize. You not only are a listener, but you're a good person that gives advice. And I think one of the things that I, um, admire about you is, um, your decision-making and your belief in your decision-making doesn't never waver. And what you believe in, you stick to. We don't always agree behind this, behind, uh, the scenes or actually in public. Um, and it takes sometimes, um, sometimes saying no needs to be said no. So thank you for all you've done for our community, our students, our staff. Um, I wish you nothing but the best and happiness. Um, so in all honesty, I've enjoyed and thoroughly, uh, have, enjoyed having you as a board member. So thank you. I appreciate it. And with that, I will, uh, moving on to you.
Um, now, just a sincere thanks to you, Sharon. It's been a pleasure being on the board with you and your commitment for sixteen years is really amazing for our students and our district. It truly has been. Um, and I also wanted to thank every single staff member for just continuing to endure this year for our students. I know, you know, there's a lot of ramifications and issues with COVID still. And I just, I just know that you're hanging in there and I just so appreciate it, every single staff member. Um, also, I just wanted to thank our parents and community and our businesses, you know, for continuing to support us with, um, just, you know, just support as well as donations. I just wanted to also, I know despite COVID, I feel like our board with the administration has really moved through some things this year. Um, we hired a new treasurer. Um, we helped support the full-day kindergarten pilot. Um, we were able to raise subpay. We helped implement cost-saving measures for our district. And I think we once again dealt with COVID again and the tough decisions that come with COVID. So, um, you know, I just want to thank you and our administration for actually getting some, uh, some things done despite how hard it's been because of COVID. And I just want to, I wish everyone a happy and successful holiday.
I just want to start by saying, um, congratulations to Sharon for, um, all of the, all of the service that, um, you've put into the district and, and the tens of thousands of students that you've affected. I think that's pretty, pretty amazing. Um, during the process, um, the search process for, uh, treasure here, when you guys were checking up on me, I was checking up on you checking up on me. And, um, one of the, uh, people that you called, Sharon, um, called me right after the conversation that you had. And, and he said, "What an awesome person." And, um, I think it's pretty cool that you had that effect on someone in a, in a short conversation. I think that speaks a lot about you. Uh, so congratulations on everything that you've accomplished here in the district.
Mr. Espe?
Yes.
Okay, I want, I need to correct you on something. You said tens of thousands of students. She's been around longer than that.
Hundreds, hundreds of thousands. Let's just say thousands, thousands. Let's say thousands. Um, and then also, I just wanted to say, um, it was an awesome event a couple of weeks ago for the Rotary Pancake Breakfast. Uh, I got to make a lot of connections and also connect the dots with people that I know, that other people know. And just, um, just, it was a really awesome event. And then I just also am super thankful to be part of the team here. It's, uh, continue to be able to make connections with more and more staff members, um, throughout just various business things that I have to take care of, um, throughout the, um, the week and the month. So it's been wonderful, um, to be a part of it. So I thank you all.
I just want to piggyback on what Chris mentioned about the Kentucky tornadoes. The Rotary is also gonna be having a truck at the mall on Monday and Tuesday. So really from like seven fifteen till eight o'clock at night, water. They mentioned diapers is, is a need there as well. Probably any other supplies, um, that anyone would be willing to drop off. I think the Think Patented Truck is being used, so they're another great partner that we work with as well. Um, and also thank you to Mrs. Thomas in the middle school tonight for the, uh, information and, and great Christmas Carol. So that was wonderful. Um, we have had a busy, um, couple of weeks since Thanksgiving. Obviously, we unmasked right after Thanksgiving. And so, um, as promised, we monitored our, our data. We had students wearing masks, students not wearing masks. We did see a little uptick in our cases, uh, the first week, but then they, um, kind of leveled off and were the same the second week. But again, some of you know, we had to monitor, uh, a couple of our buildings closely. And unfortunately, one of our buildings, uh, Bauer Elementary, we had to, um, kind of ask a couple of classrooms this week to, um, quarantine at home. So we had some remote learning. We had some kids returning from their, um, COVID quarantine. So again, we are gonna continue to do that as we move into, um, January and second semester. And just, um, encourage everyone, if you feel comfortable not wearing a mask, that's okay. If you feel comfortable wearing a mask, we definitely support that. Um, it is normal flu season, so I think we're gonna ask, um, all of our staff to remember to, to kind of sanitize and pick that up a little bit because normal germs, I think we're kind of seeing a, a recurrence of those as well. Um, and, and we are, we have had some threats, um, as everyone knows. Um, I just, I kind of want to reassure, um, everyone listening in here tonight. Um, anytime, you know, obviously with the Michigan shooting a few weeks ago, um, not that we want to say that brings a copycat, but it just brings school violence to the attention of everyone. And sometimes, unfortunately, with some of the social media platforms, we do see an increase in that. And law enforcement would say they watch for copycats and whatnot. But, you know, every threat that we've received in the last couple of weeks, um, obviously, we have school resource officers, we have school administrators. They work with, um, those students or, or families that bring those threats to, to our attention. Um, some of you might not know, if we receive those threats, maybe after school or in the evening, then we partner with our, um, police departments. Um, we've asked, we've had Miami's, um, Burke, uh, Police Department, our SRO may visit a family if we hear of a threat and actually go to their home and say, you know, we received this threat. Uh, are there, um, weapons in the home? Are there explosives in the home? If it's, so we, we are very thorough in the, the aspects of our investigation. If our SRO is done for the evening, um, we've actually called the non-emergency hotline. We've shared information with the township and the city. And in some cases, they'll be knocking on doors at nine-thirty at night. So we do, we do follow through and make sure that any threat that we get is investigated immediately, whether it's during school hours or after school hours. So, um, we do have the, um, the, uh, tip line that I shared out today, uh, with all of the families during our one call. So that if, um, they wanted to click on that website, that, um, is a person that's on the phone twenty-four-seven. They take that information. If it is deemed, in their professional opinion, um, worthy of notification, they actually call us. They don't just send an email or a text message. They call until they speak to one of our, um, administrators. So I know sometimes if, you know, you get home from work as a parent and your student shares something with you and you think, well, I want to call the school or what if, what if I don't have their number? How do I check email? We do have a, a, an option to create that communication. So those are just some things that we have used in the last couple of weeks and obviously continue to use as, as we move forward. So those are some things that we've been monitoring closely as well, um, unfortunate things, but that is part of that. So something you want to add to that.
Yeah, and the, the Publics, uh, Public School Works line that Dr. Blessing sent out today, there's a number. And then also on the front page of our website, you click on it and they will, it's a twenty-four hours. It's monitored twenty-four hours. Um, there's been times, you know, we've gotten calls at three-thirty, four o'clock in the morning and we're on the phone with the city or whoever. And, um, but it's a pretty, um, pretty intense process that they go through. The other thing that Public School Works will do is they work with all the local agencies here. So, um, have you seen, there's been a lot of, um, different threats going out there, whether it's through social media or whatever. But there is a large database in which all the police departments work together, all the SROs work together. Um, there are people behind the scenes. That's constantly what they do in terms of that. So, um, never be afraid to put that tip line in. Um, and it's kind of funny because we'll get the same phone call of the same picture that they've sent in multiple times. And, and that's okay for us to get that phone call because we want to make sure it's, it's done right. But please use that tip line, that hotline that's out there, or call the local police. The police have our numbers as well, and they'll let us know too. But it is not uncommon if someone at ten o'clock at night says about a threat or whatever, the police will go to their house and they will get the people out of bed and they will question them and, and all that. So.
Not to interrupt, there's been three today. During this meeting alone, there's a third one. The third one came through saying the day they were shooting up the high school. I've got it right here. It just came across literally ten minutes ago. We're worried. I said my daughter's in the bar. There's a lot of people. I'm scared.
And we understand that.
I heard two other parents talking. I called school immediately. We had a long conversation. There's a lot of threats right now with what happened in Michigan. I'm scared. What, what are we doing to, I mean, you're not gonna have a lot of kids in eyes. There's three in one day, or if we can have an average of two or three fights a day in the school, at this point, from what I'm hearing from teachers? I have the middle school. I know this, I know there's been a lot of issues lately. There's been rumors. I don't know what's true and what's not. I'm just nervous for my child. I mean, what are we supposed to do after what happened in Michigan with a baby? Said the boy home and said, hey, we've got forty-eight hours to get him evaluated, but let him back in the school. It's pretty sad, but I'm scared to send my fourteen-year-old to school.
And I understand that. And that, that is your choice, your, your parental right. Um, you know, as I mentioned, we are, we are very appreciative of Miami, Miami's Burke City Police and their thoroughness in their investigations as well as the township. And, you know, this is, tomorrow is a nationwide threat that someone threw out there. So some of these pictures and texts that you're getting, as Mr. Homan mentioned, they're in a database and, and they're being, um, transmitted to every teenager or social media on Snapchat. So the, these are things that we're seeing that might not have even been generated locally that kids are sharing.
Well, I mean, they say Miami's Burke High School at eight p.m. While we were in this meeting, it came across.
Sure. Yeah. And, and I've been communicating with our law enforcement as we've been in the meeting this evening as well.
Like when I talked to the library, I remember earlier, it's like, I talked to resource officers, we were on a conference call. And I know you get, there's not a lot, but I mean, what do we do as parents between? I, I don't want to say it's just a rumor, send my child to school. I mean, I've had conversations about how to climb up the window, guard the doors. I mean, I've had many conversations with them, but, you know, after, after Michigan, it's, it's very nerve-wracking.
We, we definitely understand it and, and we feel the same. Um, like I said.
I know you do.
Yes, yes.
Is there something we don't know about that might be affecting? Is there something we're looking into? What more can we do? I mean, if these kids are making these threats, you send them, you know, the officer too. But they're coming back into school and just having their backpack checked. I mean, kids threatening that, it shouldn't be in school. Should be more hard, should be punished. But I, I don't know what the answer is. I'm very nervous of my child and I'm not the only one. A lot of parents are talking about it.
Right. We understand that.
I, I can tell you this. I've got, um, eight grandchildren and seven, seven of them are still in school. And, uh, I, I, as a board member, I get a little bit nervous myself when we start talking about this stuff. But I, I can tell you that the kids have gone through training, actually in class, of what to do when these type of incidents happen. Uh, there's Alice training. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But, um, but Dr. Blessing would be more than happy, I'm sure, to explain to you about Alice at a, maybe later date tomorrow or something. Um, but, uh, yeah, you know, we're on high alert. And that goes from the township to the city, to the teachers, to the people sitting here. Uh, you know, we want our kids to feel as comfortable as we possibly can make them feel when they come to school. Because I want my grandkids to be in school too.
Is it all set for school and have barricades at door the other day, right?
That's a lockdown.
We're hearing that they're actually coming back into the school the next day. Why aren't they being held out of school until further notice? And there's like, maybe, I don't know how, but they're going overnight investigation is. But there needs to be a window instead of sending them back into the school. And these kids know that these are the ones making the threats. They're seeing them and it's nerve-wracking for these kids. They are absolutely terrified. They are absolutely terrified. My daughter's thirteen, and she's dealing with this every day right now.
Oh, I agree.
Seeing these kids come back to school and making these threats, that's,
Yeah.
that's where I'm kind of confused, is why they're, why they're coming back to the. My daughter was sent in Spanish class, and they came and pulled a kid out of class today, don't know whether he was pulled out for, but it was Mr. Black, her assistant principal, I think she was sent in with a, one of the officer, the whole class went abuzz immediately, you know how rumors go to spread, I mean, my daughter had a child, she loved her death, but I, I just, I don't know what to tell her at all. You know, she's scared. There's, there's, you know, last week, the kid kept getting behind two girls, got in a fight where one was a bloody mess. I saw the video, and every kid's gotta come. I mean, there's no secrets in any of these schools, between the teachers telling the kids that they're gonna be a locker check, to the kids telling everybody what they heard over the teachers, there's no secrets in this school. I don't want to believe it, but not to believe, but all I know is that my daughter's scared to go to school. And that's a shame, especially at this day and age.
Yeah, the shame is, it's across the whole nation.
That's what I was trying to do, yeah. We, we could talk more after the meeting, if you would like to stay, I'm sure Mr. Black would be happy to, we could chat a little bit more, so, yeah. And I, I, a couple other things, we, we did have some, um, positive, um, items this week. Uh, we had a gingerbread contest at Medlar View that, um, several of us were invited to judge, that was exciting. Uh, the middle school, um, in the STEM class had created roller coasters, and they asked us to judge, so I hope we were, we were, uh, um, educated enough to be good judges for those, uh, great projects that we saw, and today, I, I was able to participate um, in a class, um, that, that, we have a, a class through Sinclair at the high school, uh, and they did flex factor pitches, so, um, Mayor Collins and myself, and a lot of folks from Sinclair, and I think even a professor from Wright State listened to students, um, pitch some ideas about some brand-new, like, technology projects, and it was a really cool uh, experience to be a part of that, and the, the groups did a wonderful job, so. And also, I just wanna, um, thank Sharon and, um, how it's been an honor to, uh, to work with you on the board and, and serve the board and, and the students and community at Miami'sburg, so. Um, we're, we're definitely gonna miss you, but we're definitely gonna keep you busy too, and keep you involved, so.
I know you have some.
We have her lined up for our strategic plan.
The district is in good shape, and it's got good leadership, so I'm very happy to leave it in your hands.
I'm just gonna say ditto, but to Sharon, no, we wanna get out of here too, so. But, um, I've worked with you for twenty-five years in the district. Um, I think you're probably on my interview committee when I was hired in as a teacher. Um, you were my mentor as a principal, and I think one of the things that I, uh, very value and deeply respect about you, um, is you always do things for the right reasons for kids, no matter what. And I've always kept that philosophy as a, as a teacher and a principal and administrator, and, um, dealing with, talking with parents and staff every day, I constantly hear that. You know, if you're doing the right things for kids, then you're making the right decisions, so. And that came from you, as a mentor for all these years, so, thank you, Sharon.
And hopefully, I've always done what I thought was right for kids, so, and you all continue to do that, or I'll be haunting you.
See, who'd. I just wanna say, what would Sharon say?
All right. We're gonna adjourn our mo- uh, meeting, and then after that, Mr. Freeze, would you please come up, we have a card for you. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, that's wrong.
Let's, we'll let Sharon do it.
For the very last time, I move to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
Yay.
All right, first by Angel, and second by Ted Vine. And our time is seven thirty-four, and roll call, please.
Mrs. Angel?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Niece?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.